You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
People have the opportunity to understand this kind of requests and the need. They're legitimately serving Swansea residents, we assume.
No, they provide, yeah, they provide anonymized data, so.
Would it have to be broken out in the warrant article or would the warrant article just be for the amount and then we would have the vote guide next to this?
We could do it either way, whichever you just support first, if you'd like to have it, like the capital reserves and list them out, we could. Or if you wanted to just do a lump sum and then explain it. If you have the potential for increasing or decreasing, it might be better to have them broken out. Otherwise, yeah, I think.
Right in the wording of the warrant.
Yeah, I think it'd be better because when we get the invoices, we then compare it to our budget if it was all just in a lump sum. Then we could probably, maybe we could track it, but I think it'd be easier to have it broken out.
So, consensus?
All right, consensus. And I'll let the agencies know that we're breaking out, so there, this might be, they might be more incurred, they're more interested in having some of the time with the budget here and stuff.
Would you have the opportunity over the next week or so just to put a spreadsheet out that shows what we have done and what we've done so?
Yes, I can do that.
It would give us an opportunity to really take a look at it and then what goes on the warrant article could be adjusted as opposed to just doing it blindly.
That's kind of why we're there, that usually we just keep them level because it does get complicated. It's really hard to make some of those judgment calls, so we're just kind of here on keeping them level. But yeah, I think it's a good, good opportunity to see where we've been at versus what they're asking for, so I'd have to do that. So if you want to budget wise that you want it to, don't feel it's been covered or? That kind of the, I think it's the first real kind of semi-complete warrant. I understand the planning board had their zoning discussion last week, so I think that language will be coming soon. Let me just briefly review some of the thought process for these, so, okay. So three, like we've had for, not last year, but when we've had a bond for the fire station, we've had that one first, so I have that as three. I have the total amount, still blank, we're working with DEW to make sure we have a good understanding of what is in their estimate and what's not. So it's a complete total amount, so I don't have that yet. Like from DEW is hoping to get that over this week, so we'll have plenty of time to get it posted. Article four is for the North Winchester Street, California Street project. Have to have a bond article because we got both forgivable loan and low interest loan through DES for stormwater management. So we've got eight hundred and five thousand through that program. Again, combination of low interest loan and forgivable loan, just basically grant, they have to call it a loan. So it makes it look like we're borrowing off for this project somewhat. Not inaccurate, but I wish we could call the forgivable loan a grant, unfortunately, this is kind of the language we have to have. So that's, that would be article four, also shows the Northern Borders Grant in here. We'll have some additional local matching funds, but I don't think all of that needs to be broken out. Article five would be for a solar array for the wastewater treatment plant. You can also warrant again, combination grant, low interest loan for that. Total cost is estimated at four hundred and twenty thousand. Basically between the forgivable loan and some federal tax credits, I think our local match is going to be really insignificant. We'll have a pretty quick payback. But again, we have to show, show the total amount, so. We issued a request for proposals and received a submission from Revision Energy, so they are working on developing their, that was based on qualifications. They're working on finalizing the cost estimate again, so we can have it. Have it for the bond hearing and notice. And so again, four twenty, it sounds like a lot, but the actual local cost should be relatively insignificant and will be paid by the sewer fund. This is based on offsetting the usage for the wastewater treatment plant in West Swansea.
Where's the location of the array and what's the size?
Beyond the property, it's along the, so you're looking from the front on the right side and.
Of the wastewater plant?
Correct. And I confirm both with Scott, the operator, the operator's currently, Scott's self-former operator. It's not like we would need that space for, you know, we're not going to be adding lagoons or that sort of thing realistically. So I think it seems like everyone agrees that that's a decent space to put it, we're not going to put it there and then have it be in the way. I can get you the mega wattage.
So it will cover the electricity needs for the plant? And generate any income or no?
I think they want, because the funding structure, I think it has to be sized to just offset the usage.
So how is revision, how are they compensated?
With the four hundred and twenty dollars?
Right.
Like this?
Roughly, yes, yes, correct. And then we get reimbursed between the low interest loan and grants and federal tax credits.
So what's the cost of the apparatus, the panels of the install?
The material cost?
Yeah.
We don't have that.
So who pays that?
We would, we would pay upfront the total cost and then get reimbursed by the low interest loans, the grants, the tax credit.
How does revision get paid? Just as they're selling the stuff to us, right? I mean, are we buying the power from them?
No, we would own, we would own the system. So basically we would be hiring them to install the array.
So that's the four twenty as for the install? See, just doesn't seem like quite enough money to do it.
Sure they'd be happy to have.
I'm sure they'd want more.
Yeah.
So in the end, we end up owning the system?
Correct, it's not a lease.
Yeah.
And it just gets us our consumption charge, not the delivery, right? That would be basically probably half of our electric bill, I think.
Sounds right.
The delivery fees. Probably right up there for three phase or whatever they have.
And how long is the contract?
With revisions? They probably would be about a year, year and a half.
So what, so who, who's providing the delivery then?
The delivery of the.
Yes, I was saying.
Every source. It's just like the meter of power, so every source does the delivery and then the consumption's not.
So it's not direct to the plant?
Yeah, but you still pay.
Could be on the real.
Yeah. Because it, yeah, it's got a, it feeds back into the power, so at night we have power.
So it doesn't go direct to the plant?
Right.
It goes out to every source and then back to the plant, why can't we just go direct to the?
Well, then you'd have to have batteries and everything else for the night. But it, I think the meter runs backwards, right? I mean, that's. How they do it during the day, it runs backwards, they're feeding power in. And then at night, the meter runs the other way.
I'm getting close, I promise.
It's on this page, it's.
Hundred and forty thousand kilowatt. Kilowatts per hour, but I don't think that's what you're looking for.
So in the end, this is a benefit for the town, for the, not for the town, but for the central plant?
Yeah, I think the pay, like I said, depending on what the funding breakdown is, the payback would be, would be pretty quick. Without any of the funds, I think it would be like a seventeen year payback, but with the credits, just thirty percent, it gets down to eleven point four years. And then if we get additional credits, it'll be even shorter, so I think it'll only be a few year, few year payback. I had the on it, I had trouble finding it.
So what would be the cost to make it a self-sustaining system? Where we don't have to pay a delivery fee, obviously Sly mentioned it's batteries, so what would, what would be that cost? So that we would, it would just be a pure source, clean source for the, for the plant?
I would say let's discuss it with revision, who know a lot more about this than, than I do.
I'd just be curious.
Yeah, good question. I know the batteries are, the technology is coming, but the batteries are still a huge expense.
Would, would we have the option, so, so the contract with revision is basically a year?
Right.
And then?
We hire them, they build it, the contract's done.
Okay, and so if something, if, if technology developed to the point like you're suggesting, where having batteries and whatever is involved in that became economically feasible? We would have the flexibility to do that?
I don't see, yeah.
And avoid that resource entirely?
I mean, we might still, we have some of the pump stations, so we might still have some, there's some distribution, you know, it's not all on site. There's pump stations that are on site, so there might be, you might still want to.
But in general, the, the plant itself?
So that would be article five. Article six, so we also had applied for a facility feasibility study to just study the whole property. And we talked about the phosphorus issue and the capacity to treat additional, additional inflow. So we had applied for, through the state revolving loan fund for a hundred thousand dollar study. We weren't successful in twenty-three, but we had a meeting with DES and we also talked about the rates, the rates. Week or two ago, Joe and I met them, you know, they suggested we put an article on this year in anticipation for applying again in the spring for the facility study, which would tie into the rate, the rate effort, they're helping us look at the rates as well. So that would be article six, would be kind of an anticipation of hopefully getting a future grant again in the form of a forgivable loan. So it looks like we have a bunch of bonds, it's really the fire station and then these other ones that are, that's just the structure for the, that the state uses for some of these funding sources. Article seven would be the budget. Article eight, nine, our usual expendable trust and capital reserves, so the kind of miscellaneous ones in eight, the DPW focused ones in nine. Ten I had on here, don't know if you still want to do it, but last year we had an article, put money away toward the fire station. We didn't have an article, I included it on here and said it could be null and void if the station passed. If you want to take that out, do that. Basically, we keep the same, either we keep clean three hundred, three hundred thousand away, or if you may. You know, it was in conflict, you want to only have one, that's, that's fine too, but I had included it. Figuring if we've been saving that three hundred thousand every year the whole time, we should be probably halfway there.
I think we, we've got to be practical and recognize that we've got to get them out of town hall. And, and if this doesn't pass, we, we should, in my opinion, have, have a serious discussion of the two-way garage with an office. That we would have the funds to put that up and then we'd be done with the deal and just move on. It doesn't solve the problem, it doesn't protect the firefighters, it doesn't clean anything. But at least it would get them out of town hall and, and let us work on town hall. So I think we have to keep that in there.
Good, I agree. Article eleven, CIP committee recommended creating a fund for rail trails. So I have it set up as an expendable trust fund with the purpose of maintaining, improving and other expenses associated with the Cheshire and Ashford rail trails. And starting at a ten thousand dollars. Next, this is kind of another potential discussion point, obviously we spent a lot of this year talking about the ambulance issue. We also talked about how we knew we were getting kind of an artificially cheap or reasonable deal at this point, but we know future expenses are coming. So in part of our vein of putting things out there that we want to continue to have a discussion about. I suggested we put, set up an ambulance expendable trust fund for the purposes of funding expenses related, providing ambulance services, including but not limited to contributing towards an outside agency for ambulance services. So again, I think probably made sense based on discussions we had previously, but just getting out there that we know we're going to have to be paying more for ambulance. It's a small amount, really token, we could do more if you want. I suggested putting in twenty-five thousand. And again, part of our idea of making sure the issue is, is out there is we start to. You know, we're already probably six months basically into our three-year contract, so pretty soon we have to start thinking about the next one.
I'd be in favor of putting more in. Because I think it's, it's going to be catastrophic to go from eighty thousand to thirty, three seventy-ish. Because we don't know what it's going to be in two and a half years, but that's a huge jump to go. Whereas if we've got some money that can ease that, even if we use some of it the first year and some of it the second year, it would, it would ease that jump. So I'd, I'd be in favor of more. I like the concept.
Much more?
I, I think if, if we did fifty or seventy-five. Because again, going from eighty-ish to three seventy, it's substantial. And if we've got, if we've got fifty or seventy-five that we can apply in year one and then the same amount in year two. By year three, we're, we're up to where we, where we need to be. That's just what I thought about it.
Were we at now sixty or are you? Sixty this year, I think.
Yeah, I think sixty. Was it forty-eight, sixty, seventy-five or something, I think it was something like that.
Yeah, so I think if we did forty or so, it would be, it would be like paying hundreds next year. If we bump it up even more, the, the third year. We would basically be where we are because that next year we wouldn't be adding any.
Forty sound good?
Forty is what it is.
How much?
Forty.
Want to go into the public hearing while we make a break?
What's that?
Want to do a six o'clock public hearing?
Oh, yes.
Six to three, definitely.
The town of Swansea Board of Select will hold the following public hearings pursuant to RSA thirty-one ninety-five dash B on Wednesday, December twentieth at six P M at Whitcomb Hall. Hear testimony from the public regarding acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated funds as follows. Seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents from the state of New Hampshire. In accordance with House Bill two for maintenance construction and reconstruction of municipally owned bridges. Fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy cents from the state of New Hampshire. In accordance with House Bill two for maintenance construction and reconstruction of class five roads. Thirty thousand from the John Flatley Company for repaving of Safford Drive. And ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-four cents from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA for expenses related to a declared disaster in twenty twenty-one. And the usual, if you're unable to attend, may submit written questions posted December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Public hearing is now open. Anybody got a problem with accepting money?
Did not receive any written questions, your comments either.
What's this, what's the scope of the project on Safford Drive, that they're contributing thirty thousand?
Towards repaving, Joe had made some kind of repair, spot section repairs last year, I think. And so it would be for basically to complete that, that first section, the old section, the long nanotech.
Where the driveway, it's in there, right? It's de-eliminated, so Joe fixed it and Warren will fix it again or put another coat.
Right.
Is this a, a result of the work that they're doing or this is something that they?
This was before they started.
But it was in recognition that that was going to be the main, during construction, especially the main kind of access point. And I think, I think if you look at it, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable.
And it's thirty thousand out for that?
It's what we had discussed and that's what they were, it's what we, it's what Joe suggested, I believe, so.
I believe there were concerns raised at the planning board about construction back at Safford Drive, it wasn't up to the traffic in its present state. And that's why Flatley offered to pay you that.
If there's nothing else, I'll close the public hearing. You need anything to accept it or?
You'll make that motion, right?
So. I'll second, all in favor? Aye? You want to keep going on budget?
Yeah, I just have, there's just one last article which I've kind of rethought since I put this together, but obviously the other thing we had this summer was a lot of flooding. And so we don't have a contingency fund, there is a statutory optimization to have one. But more I learned about it, it's really just creating kind of a line item, it doesn't build over time. So I think it has limited, limited use unless we want to. I think it has limited use. I guess the process that we used, which was to basically borrow from the fund balance by expanding the budget, seemed to work fairly well. So I guess I would suggest either removing that or if you did want to try to put money away towards, you know, disaster expenses. Set it up like as an expendable trust instead of using this option to do a contingency fund, because it's not, because it's not going to fund. That's what the statute says, but the more I learned about it from other towns, it's really just a one-year item.
Or we could just maybe fund our gravel and sand accounts and.
Right.
Asphalt. We have gifts for those, right?
Not for gravel and sand, but we have line items, so. We have winter maintenance, then we have the pavement.
Yeah, line items won't build either, so.
Right. But I think we're never going to probably get to the point where we can save enough to be able to cover something like we had this summer, so.
No, but I mean, just to give you something to spend until you go for the feeding request to.
Right.
Get somebody back.
I'd be, I was so confused reading it, so I'd be in favor of either dropping it or going to the expendable trust format where we would have the opportunity to build. Like Sly said, put it towards asphalt or whatever, whatever, just something that would build as opposed to a line item, doesn't really accomplish it.
Doesn't rip out, yeah.
Ten thousand, doesn't pay the fuel bill.
Right. All right, we'll, we'll zoom back for further study then.
Anything else?
No.
You want to jump ahead to old business and expect some bond water level? Certainly. You've been so patient.
So, Marcus Flairi, in this last meeting, I didn't know what was going on. Recording next day, while I was there in Amsterdam, six feet above sea level, no water problems. So in that meeting, there was a response that was read saying that we were at winter level there around October fifteenth. That's not true, okay? Typically, the process is around October fifteenth, this year it was October sixteenth, it was Monday. They come in and they take several boards out, two, two boards, maybe three if you're lucky. About a week later, ten days at the most, they've come and take some additional boards out, maybe the final boards. If they're able to, if not, they'll come a third time and get the new boards. That has been the process for some time, that has been the process, and it has worked historically. That was not the process this year, okay? To the point where what happens is on October fifteenth fifth. We expect the water to go down, get answered, people get answered because they want to clean the shoreline, you know, there's a lot of excess leaves and debris. And they want to get that out of the water, you know, really do take care of this body and whatever. The, beyond that initial couple of boards coming out, I don't know if it was one and a half or two and a half. We did not get additional boards out for at least two weeks, okay? And I was working with Joe, trying to, you know, get him there, he felt the water level was too high and wasn't safe, pulled the boards. I, I don't know, you know, I buy that, but I'm not going to question someone who can safety jump. What I must say is this weekend I waited in that water, okay? First thing I did, it was Saturday, I got to where the boards are and because there's water rushing all around me. I used my foot and I went down and felt the surface of the boards and I felt the seam. And I went down further, I felt another seam and I went down further. I then proceeded to roll my sleeve up, I'm in waders, and reach in as far as I could to validate at least those two seams, right? So if you're looking at, or we're talking, there are three fingers, whatever it is on the bottom, I don't know if that's a board or if that's a base to the dam. But to me, there's at least two boards there and we expect one board to be in. So I don't know if there's three boards in or two boards in, but I don't know the configuration of the dam or the base, okay? I did go back on Sunday and I measured it, there's twenty-two inches of whatever is in there spilt in that dam, right? There's at least one board in that needs to come out, okay? This has been going on for quite some time. It's what we jumped directly, right, we're going to continue, we get our feedback from Joe, come to the board, we get our feedback once again. I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus, I'm here to hopefully resolve an issue. What surprises me and disappoints me is it seems that nowhere along the way in this process did anybody go and validate what was actually in there. People could have mistaken how many boards are in there, whatever, right? Once again, I'm not here to question it, I would think that somebody would have validated the boards in there. I can say with ninety-five percent certainty, that there is one board in there that should come out and possibly two. So I'm not happy.
And Mark was not alone when he did that, although those of us who were present did not reach him for water, you know. We saw him do it, we saw him date the measurements and the boards on the deck are between seven, eight inches wide. So if you take the twenty-two inches, that's three boards worth roughly of, the boards aren't real small, but they're roughly, we measured them, they're seven, seven and a half inches. So the twenty-two inches represents three board widths. I don't know if that means the base is the same width as a board or if there is a base or not, but the twenty-two inches is important because it does show that there are more than one boards width down, or more than two boards width down, that's what we're saying.
I guess we need to know what the engineer grew up when they rebuilt it. To find out if the last two boards that are in there are for the big drain out that we had when we rebuilt the dam.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know, I mean, there could be a permanent base in that.
I don't know if it's permanent, I think there, there's going to be some boards in there that you would take out to lower the dam more than anybody would want it.
Right.
Like we had when we rebuilt it, so. So, those I think would stay, I just don't know with this, you know, what was rebuilt, how many boards there are total.
And Sly, the, the problem is that because we got that in snow, so all the water that's fallen has gone into the river system, has gone into the pond.
Yeah.
Because the diversion dam isn't doing anything up there, we don't know whether our knowledge, because we know that the water's higher than it usually is at this time of year. We don't know if that's caused by the fact that there isn't any, hasn't been any snow, whether we've handled up a very rainstorm or not.
Well, there was, there was a lot of snow up in Harrisville that ends up coming down.
Right, well, that doesn't take forever to clear out, so we just don't know.
Yeah. So this is a comparison of what summer level would look like and then what it would look like if it were warm now. The picture comparison is from twenty nineteen, uh, when it did roll the lake down, but this is what typically would look like in winter.
And SCI, and you said you could walk over to?
Right.
Oh, if you're part of working, sort of the water's higher than it's been, you know, it's almost like the summer running.
So if the, the, if the water, if the water is, is not dam, it's, it's flowing, which is what I saw a couple of weeks ago. What would another board do? In other words, it just seems like there's so much water coming.
Maybe it was the water flowing out, the grain is gonna, what it is coming in, so it dropped over.
But it, it could actually, that's going pretty, thank you, that's going pretty. I would wanna get caught in that, so, with, without a dam there, so i- in other words, if another board was taken out, well, at this point, with the boards that are in there, the water level's above it anyway, so.
The normals, the lake normally has water coming in and water going out at all times.
No, I understand, but what I, what I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding is that dam is not damming the water because there's still a tremendous amount of water that's flowing over the boards.
Well, it would be different.
It's maintaining that, that twenty-two inches is maintaining a certain, certain, uh, depth and limiting the flow out of, out of the lake.
So it just didn't seem like it was limiting anything to it.
Right.
It should get down to the point that it's just an inch over the board or something.
If we didn't have too much water coming in.
Really flying over.
If the diversion dam was a RC Jarzad X seventeen waters edge, and the diversion dam was in working order, then you'd be able to control the flow rate to, to compensate for the number of boards. But we don't have that availability because of no guts to divert them, those are all the rules.
But, but also, I just wanna say that normally, the pond is healthy because we have water flowing in and water flowing out. We don't want a stagnant pond, so we always want water over the boards going out. And we don't want it necessarily to be a torrent, as you're, as you're noticing now. But we do want, we do want the water to be coming out at all times. Uh, it's, it's not a bathtub, in other words, it's, it's something that's flowing in and flowing out and that keeps the lake healthy, brings nutrients in and, uh, takes works out. So it's, it's one of those things where the, uh, the healthy lake has got a certain flow to it and we wanna have that flow to, to be, we want the outflow to at least be what the inflow is. And if the water level is up too high, it's because the outflow is not high enough to compensate for the loss.
I, I get that to some extent, but it's still flowing, there, there's a tremendous amount of water flowing. So, it, I, I think Sly had sent out this, uh, what would you call it?
The outer work.
Is this that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And, and so our understanding is we, we don't have knowledge of, of when the releases are occurring, they just, they just occur. Uh, it would, it would just seem to believe that if, if there was a, the ability of the engineers to give some notice that it was coming, that we could potentially react to it. I, I don't, I, I don't know.
How would we react, by pulling additional boards?
No, I think we'd maybe do something up at the diversion dam.
I think, I think that's.
Again, I think so, I seem to recall, the DES approved the design for the Lower Wilson Pond Dam based on the diversion dam, always allowing no less than thirty or sixty, whatever cubic feet per minute, and no more than three hundred or whatever the, the high end was.
So, what we've noticed is in the summer, when we have the boards in, a flow of about sixty, seventy cubic feet per second is very nice for a pond. Water is flowing over the dam only maybe a couple inches, right? So you got a constant nice flow. We get a lot of rain, um, certainly, the amount of water flowing over the dam increases and to some extent, it'll actually even go over the spillway, right? So that's, because of that design, when we had consistent rains in June and the ultimate storm this year, we actually handled it with six, five and a half boards in. There was actually six boards in at that time. Um, we didn't have a board removed until two days after that storm, which, uh, it was teetering, you know, that like, you know, do I call Joe or not, do I call Joe or not? And he eventually removed the board, right, um, without me calling him. So that, that was good because, you know, I mean, we really handled that storm very well. Um, you can see in here, so this is what I handed out. Um, it's just a, this week, the first, um, first page is, this is a five-day cycle of what's coming out of the artwork there, okay? The second page is ten weeks. And what you see there is, you see the peaks and downs.
Yep.
You see that spike that is proven reason in December. Um, I even marked on that page, October fifteenth. You go back and now you see six months, and I tried doing two years, but I think it's, I'm thinking how.
I couldn't get it to go to you.
Um, you can see where they're releasing all this water around June, July, right? Because of everything that they had. We handled that. We just seem that we can't handle it going down right now.
Hmm.
Um, taking another board out, I mean, if it's flowing eight inches over the dam right now, taking another board out, you know, it might flow twelve inches over it for a while, but hopefully it'll get back down to eight inches or, you know, and eventually four and whatever. We just have too many boards.
I think Joe's plan is, you know, if the water gets down to a normal level on that board that's left, if he takes that out, then it can drain more, but if you, if you have eight inches going over it, I don't think he can take the other board out because all that water would end up going into the Keene Airport. You know, you.
I don't think so. Based on the, based on the flow we had in the summer, I, I, I don't even, I wouldn't even entertain that thought. I don't think that that would be the case.
It's a lot of water when you pull out a board when you got eight inches on top of it already.
But when you have a dam.
Sixteen inches.
A dam that's, you know, maybe six feet across and you have a spillway, it's another six feet across, and we were feeding from both ends in the summer. I don't think so.
But it's more work to be done, I guess.
It's a problem that is a neither a solution, but we don't know exactly, exactly what to do because we don't have enough information. Um, but is there any progress on looking into what we could do with the diversion dam?
I know that there was some debris in that channel.
And that was cleared out.
If that was cleared out, it's gonna just allow more water to come down, you know? So, where there's no guts up there, I don't know what could be done. Because we don't own it.
Back when the stoke work was described by the engineers, when we had the meetings, I think it was two thousand thirteen, even though the state did not state that diversion dams had a dam, they did back in that, it is an important part to even progressing to fix the lower dam. And it stayed in there, it needed to be repaired, it needed to have the gate put back in so it could control the flow of water down into Wilson Pond to make it do what necessary. It was there, it's, so it's in there. And that's, it was all four hundred thousand dollars was part of that.
Yeah, we didn't spend four hundred thousand dollars on the diversion dam.
Oh.
No.
I think it was thirty, right? But if we had them go up and do something with the trash truck or whatever it was.
Right.
Or the abutment on one side.
Right, prove the walkway across soon.
But it clearly stated in that statement that there was no, the trap trap was damaged, but there was no gates. And they, at that time, one of their solutions was to fix the trash gate and then put a gate, put a gate in there to, so they can regulate it.
Keep working on it.
Michael, when the, when the work is done on the, on the upper dam, what, what's the plan to slow the water? How, how are they gonna do it?
At the upper dam, during construction, you're saying?
Yeah.
Um, I would rather have the engineer and/or the contractor speak to that versus trying to describe that. I mean, they need to maintain flow, but then they have a weapons permit that they have to comply with. But in terms of the actual logistics, I would want to try it. I'd try it, but.
But Michael, that public hearing, the engineer said, they would maintain the flow as it exists.
Right.
And that was for water, all any of Lower Wilson Pond?
No, just be diverted with water around the dam.
They, they showed where they were diverted in a channel around the work on the upper dam. So we were, we were meant to believe that there would be no change in the water flow for the summer, when we're doing all this, this stuff. And, and yet, the only concern that we have, of course, is one of the particulates coming into the lower pond. You know, it, it, when they're diverting, does that mean more or less of the things that normally come down are gonna come into the pond? We'll get, we'll find out for your waters. We're, we're now testing at the culvert, so we'll, we'll see what, what changes between this summer and next summer at the culvert. And we'll know whether it's bringing more, um, or less stuff that we don't want in the pond. But the, it's not so much the flow in the summer that really concerns us, it's, it's the flow when we do have large water coming into the pond, it's, it's a way to regulate the, the, uh, water level. And as we said before, as long as we know what the water level is gonna be, we can adapt. But when the water level is not what we expect, then we're, then our plans to save our docks from water damage and other things all get called into question. So, we, we need to have some way of making sure that the water level is consistent from year to year so we can make plans, that's all.
Yeah, and prior to the, the dam being, the lower dam being with them, it was very consistent. Everything was very consistent year, year to year in terms of what the water's gonna go down, how far it would go out. We always had plenty of ample time, I mean, you used to do a whole gathering to go around and pick up trash along the, next to the water and you'd have to have waiters on, and you'd have to have a gobble, or goggles?
With smart.
No, thank you. So it's just, it's disheartening to see all that expenditure of taxpayer funds and the, the dam, the lower dam is correct, but the diversion dam is not. And the dam in the middle is the very, very high hazard dam. So when the Army Corps of Engineers are releasing those gallons of water, that diversion dam's not helping to slow the flow and protect that middle dam, which is the hazardous dam, the high hazard, what we were told in two thousand thirteen. That, that dam was probably the whole reason they got to start pulling broad.
Right.
So it's just, like, what happened?
So there are two concerns, one is, is there a better way to manage to level the water with the boards, the lower dam? And can you use something about having the diversion dam a part of our arsenal to control the water level? And that's, 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 that way?
Yes, exactly, yes.
And I.
And the concern of, you know, what's gonna happen to Keene, if the diversion, diversion dam is working for years and years, it was working, to some extent, it must have been working. So if, if by us putting it back together the way it should be, then things have happened down river that were put too close to the river at that time and now they're just, they're flooded. It's like, you buy a property with wetlands, but you don't think it's gonna get wet? And you have a storm like this past summer and you have a pond that can just have wetlands, they were more, just a mushy area. I don't know that it's an issue for the town of Swansea to be, I mean, yes, we should be concerned, but I don't think any, anything that we've done so far would be brought back on us. If anything, it should go up higher to Army Corps of Engineers, it's their responsibility in all of this. Just my thoughts.
Would the Army Corps of Engineers be interested in the way to work on the diversion dam?
Not their dam. I think, didn't it come through Eversource? Was it PSA?
They owned it, yes, I believe.
Yes, yeah, so we can blame Jen.
Or, or.
And that'd get light and power?
Back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand thirteen, in the news, they had a meeting and they were gonna do some work on it, the breed M one thirty-two. And W Davis was on the board. And they turned on, and in the meeting, they said to Lee, about how they wanted to work on the dam. So the police said, well, I'm gonna have to go back to the diversion dam, it's falling down. And W Davis says, well, you can't do that until we go and notify all the residents of Wilson Pond. So back in two thousand thirteen, that diversion dam was starting to record twenty, twenty minutes. W was on the board.
We're retired, we're a lot of retired. Talking one back.
Things were different and people still learning.
So Michael, do we have clarity with regard to our responsibility with the diversion dam? From the standpoint of trying to collaborate with everybody involved to reuse the whole mechanism and get it operating again, what our liabilities are, what our rights are, do we know that?
It's functioning as designed, it's designed to send water down to help the Wilson Pond Dam and into Wilson Pond. It, it's functioning as designed, they keep saying it's not, but that's how, we had different options, we could look at, we look, you know, one of the options was to raise thirty-two up instead of lowering the water level permanently. And we talked about chugging off that the diversion dam and not having any form. So it's functioning as designed, it's not.
But is it exceeding that three hundred or whatever cubic feet per second or minute or whatever? The engineer, I, I believe there's something from DES about the approved engineering of the diversion dam. You know?
Yeah, I don't know if it's succeeding.
As I said last time, if there's some way that you monitor what the flow is up there, it would really help us to have some periodic check into what the flow was.
You have, it's just the level going through the grades, you know, to know that, you know? Because, you know, ideally, you want the flow to be continuous, you just wanna control the excess.
Right.
You know, there's a whole velocity thing, you can't keep something in, you know? Um, you know, it's like putting water through a hose, it's all sudden it's going faster, right? I'm not so sure, there happened so much of the diversion dam because it's kind of off to the side, it's not directly taking the bulk of that pressure, that water going downstream, but, you know, knowing, knowing where the, where there is, where we have excess, where we have a good flow, if you need, boy, for now.
And, and Michael, it's, it's working the way it's supposed to in terms of diverting water into, into Upper Wilson Pond, but it did have originally, it had a way of reducing that flow, you know, to, or something that went up and down in there. But that's not, it's, it's, the question is, it, it was designed to divert, but it was also designed to be controlled by the version, that's.
Right, and previously, but when we selected an option for how to rehabilitate Lower Wilson Pond Dam, it was just, that improvement was designed to continue the flow, to keep the water quality, like the folks that I think did around the pond wanted was to maintain the flow, so it was, it wasn't designed to be functional or to be able to block it up. It was designed to maintain the flow. It was designed to maintain the flow.
That's a good point. I mean, you know, it, it, you know, if we think that something wasn't done at that time, it may not have been done intentionally, is what you're saying. They may not have wanted to put that in there. So if we don't have the ability to regulate the water at that point, then the only person who can regulate the water would have put that in there. And, uh, you know, at this point, Mark was in chest-high waiters, going in there, the water was nowhere near his chest. When he's standing there, it seems to me, it's, it's certainly possible to remove a board. It's not too deep to remove a board. He could get his arms down quite a ways.
And use a dangler hook.
And there's a hook on the board, there's a, there's a metal ring in there, a hook.
You just reach down through that degree, and pull the water down.
So physically, it's not impossible to go out, is what I'm saying. It's just, the question is, should we? And there we have a difference of opinion, with some consensus, you think the water level's too high? And I'm guessing that there are folks who don't, if the water's too high.
I don't think anyone thinks the water level isn't higher. It's the board level versus the water level, which was the point that Bill made when my initial letter to Marcy, which you guys saw the draft, and then we corrected, because I don't think anyone, I don't think anyone disagrees about the water. It's about the cause and the, the board level. I don't know, I don't wanna speak very.
Well, if the water's going over the existing board now, just barely going over, not eight inches, no, I'm saying, but if, if it gets down to that point and it's just falling over that last board, would that be okay? I mean, that would lower your water by eight inches or so. It would still be too high.
We're, I mean, based on what I've seen since I've been here, only after probably four, five years, it'd be, I mean, I think with twenty inches over what exactly past years.
But, but, but what I'm saying is, is right. I mean, if, if for some reason the flow into the pond would go down enough so that the water level would look, if it's just going over those boards by just a little bit, then, then the water level would be down where we expect in the winter. So.
Okay.
I think, I, I would imagine so, because Mark, there was not that much water over the top board thing.
Yeah, I think that would take us down to where we were in the, um, beginning of the summer. Where we hadn't got down to, uh, the level where people can go out.
Yeah, I mean, the water went down originally, then it came up again, we had storms, it came up again. And then it went down a little bit, then it came up again, and then, of course, right now outside, because we just had a storm. Uh, it's just, basically, we could just try to wait it out, but then, that, you know, I mean,
who knows? You just could put, like, your ice fishing derby and get, you know, the water up and down, fluctuating, you know, the water moving. You know, it's gonna take a while, where it freezes, is it gonna freeze enough? You know, there's a number of things here. Personally, I, I don't mind the water, personally. I take my dock over there. That doesn't mean I'm like here to, you know, address some issue that is seen by people around the way.
So the, the, what you just mentioned is what I'm confused about. So if, if the water level is roughly eight inches over the top board, and we took that other board out, the water level would then be eight inches plus whatever the width of that board is.
Not for long, if you got a saw.
But, but, but if, but if that, but where I'm going, where I'm trying to understand, and I'm not a physics guy or anything, but if, if taking that board out is gonna drop the water fifteen inches, why isn't it dropping those eight inches now? Why, why is there so much water that it's not at the point that you and Sly agreed to, that it's just an inch over? Because if it was an inch over, and you were saying it's too high, then I'd understand taking the board out, because it would increase the, it would increase the flow out. But right now, could, could the velocity actually increase by, by taking that other board out?
Well, but the, the, uh, if, if you take that other board out, the rate that some water leaves the pond, it would go up. Right?
No, I don't know that, because, well, well, in other words, you're eight inches over now. So you take a seven-inch board out, why wouldn't you be fifteen inches over what's, what's left?
That's doubling the flow going out.
But that, the cross-sectional area, the cross-sectional areas, the water falling out increases, and the, uh, gravity will cause it to, to go at a greater speed. And that volume that comes out, be greater until, as long as that, as, as long as that line exceeds the rate that comes in, the, the water level will fall further out. Now, the worry is that if we do that board, and the, the flow coming in goes way, way down, that that is too much water going out of the pond, and we end up with a very low level. But it's hard to believe that that's gonna be the case based on past years, if we think there's an extra board in there, based on this year, based on last year. In other words, if this board is, is more than what it was last year, then we don't expect one of the water flow in to settle down a little bit. We don't expect the outflow to catch up and bring the water levels down. So that's, that's the worry.
So I think that was Joe's worry too. If I, if I remember correctly, that, that he was concerned that the water level would end up being too low, without the ability to, to then restore it and rise back up to where it would normally be.
The board back in. But, but.
Yeah, but you, you can do that if you've got flow coming in, but if your flow su- suddenly decreases, then, you know, we've had situations where there isn't a whole lot of water flowing over the dam. And so if you get to that point, then there's, there's no solution to it. I don't, he had his reasoning. It, it seems like the, it seems like the concern is upstream. But unless, unless he agrees with you all, that there's one or two extra boards in there, which we can certainly find out.
Me, for me personally, I, I'm, I don't know. I, I don't know, as I said before, is this a product of the fact we had no snow, so the water got trapped somewhere, and it's all in the system coming down? Is that just a, because of a warm wet fall? And so the water hasn't had a chance to stabilize yet. And what, the reason for, for taking the boards out slowly in the fall is to let the water, let it go down slowly, so we're stabilizing the water, then if it go down, then we don't have a, a overreaction or an underreaction. And, and maybe you jump right, maybe we can wait until this stabilizes. But in the meantime, we're worried that the bottom's gonna freeze, and we might be, call it there, so it's. And that's the concern, you know? But I don't know, though, I really can't tell you for sure that, that this won't stabilize as much, because you're right. It looks like the water's going out great, great. And that should, if that's bigger than what's coming in, we should go down eventually. But the water's also coming in at great rate too. People could, it's, it's coming in. Ask. So it, it's really, I'm, I'm, I'm.
So what can we do? We, we can find out if the boards that are in there is consistent with previous years, or if there's more or less. We can find that.
Yeah.
Because Joe can tell us that.
Yeah.
What, what else can we do?
Is there? Is there any way the town could borrow a flow meter and find out what the flow initially is? Make sure it's not exceeding the amount that the engineer says for the day? That's, that's, it seems to me, as long as we're not unsafe as far as the dam is concerned, then maybe we can wait a little bit to see what happens. But, you know, there are a lot of people on the pond who are clamoring to get something else done, more to pick out, because they really think that the water level's too high. So we need to do something to assess this situation a little bit. So I'm suggesting that we try to find out what the flow is of the diversion dam. Just to, just to verify that we're not in trouble.
So, so the two things we could do are verify the number of boards, plus or minus, or equal, and then engage a flow meter of some sort, company, whatever, just to give us a sense of what the flow is.
Yeah, anything else you guys think of? I, I've sort of undercut some of what they're talking about, instead of wanting to get that, that board out and down. But I'm not really sure I can say personally that it really is something that won't settle out, you know?
I think you could measure the flow right at the Upper Wilson Pond Dam. If you took the distance and the depth, I think that would give you an idea of how much is flowing over the low, the Upper Wilson Pond Dam.
I mean, there are flow meters, I, I know they exist somewhere. It, it's a cubic feet per second, which you want.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, or something that measures that, would be good.
I'll, I'll just, you know, remind everybody, historically, there were six boards in that dam. Prior to this year, five of its boards would come out, the water would keep drawing down. And we did the work on the dam, six boards came out, that dropped the water further. But for winter, five boards have typically come out. This year, we went from six boards, five and a half boards. So that tells me four and a half boards. Went from six boards to five and a half boards. That tells me this year, four and a half boards should come out. And to maintain a historical wind chill level that I mean, I've seen for four years, and I think for everybody else in city longer. And that's sort of, I'm just doing, that has not happened.
There, there are four and a half boards on deck, one of those boards is probably the board, but the half board replaced. So there really will be three and a half boards on the deck that came out.
It took six boards out, put a half a board in, and, so, it's an extra board there.
So, and just reiter- reiterate that. Normally, what you've seen in the, in the late fall is five boards on, on top, I mean, five boards out?
Five boards out.
And there's how many now, three and a half?
Four and a half.
Four and a half.
But we think that one of the boards is the board that the half board replaced.
Replaced.
To be introduced, they have boards through that stack of six, you know, eight.
So if there were five and a half, there's, what, what's left, what's on top now?
There are four and a half on top. We think that somewhere there were five and a half in and one more down. And now there are four and a half out, which means that three and a half came out.
Right.
Meaning two in there instead of one. That's what we think.
Okay, so this, so we're, we're debating that there's, there was, there's one board extra that's, that's in, other than what would normally be the case.
That's what we think. And, and, and as, as we talk about, we don't, we don't know where this is gonna settle out, because right now, we've got extraordinary flow coming out and going out. And the water will wait, run the distance and freezing, and then not wanting to take a board out, because if they take a board out, after the pond freezes, assuming good, it's gonna cause the ice to move the things that's attached to it.
Well, we can find out.
Yeah.
We can certainly find that out, and then we can check it, so the flow meter, or whatever it's called, and.
Joe can borrow my weight of the system.
Well, he would know. We should know.
And, 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 you know, it could definitely be a difference of opinion in terms of how weak the water needs to be. But historically, the water is deeper right in ahead. That's, that's a fact.
I'm already talking to him.
You know, you were talking upstairs, but we're waiting. You should have a, you have to put the bowl there, go out there. Because it, it's really like unloved when it's summer right now, rather than, it's more summer rain than it's winter.
Sorry, thanks so much for your time, but we should just be resolved.
And we, we really appreciate your listening, that's what we're doing here. This is, this is more than we expected, really. You haven't rushed us off, you've engaged with this very well.
No, we could certainly find out those two things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year.
Are we off to waste water treatment plant operations contract?
Indeed. So our one-year test agreement with WSO Plus has been pretty successful, so we'd like to continue and extend it for a three-year term.
Is the ultimate goal to wean ourselves off of that, or?
Potentially, uh, yeah, potentially, we're open to see. Uh, we can go back to having staff manage it. So we have a few people that are working on getting licenses. So, yeah, potentially, we'll see. You know, we initially were thinking maybe one more year, but really, I think three is a safer, safer time period.
Given the discussion we had in public earlier, do we, are we organizationally set up that, that we can use existing staff to essentially take that over in two or three years?
I think we would, I don't, I think we would need to add staff. We had a, we had Scott's position, full-time operator, that we had to build, so I think we would need either to go back to that and to have the two people who are doing it part-time, um, or something along those lines. But no, I don't, I don't think it would just be within existing staff without going back to at least the level we were at before, probably more.
Could, would, would they be amenable to a two-year contract with a one-year option?
Probably. Or, I don't, that.
It seems if we're, if we're already in the training process, do we need to engage for three years?
I think there's an opt-out for conveniences, I believe, and, and actually, I don't, I didn't give you the, uh, terms of here, though. I believe there was an opt-out. So otherwise, we can't do them all the year.
On your, an operator?
Well, I'm thinking if we're training people now.
Right. Depends on you're an operator next year, then we wouldn't need the redundancy.
I think, I think three years is realistically when we think we could potentially be in that position, I think. I think if we got to one where we were ready and could, I don't think they'd be opposed to having that discussion.
Can we, can we, can we have that conversation with them first before we agree? Otherwise, we're, we're contractually obligated.
Yes, we can do that.
Maybe we have to give them six months' notice or something like that.
At one time, I wish I had left in the, uh, the legal legal stuff, it usually don't, you know, so we can see that, so, yeah, we can do that.
Good. All right, so we're up to January meeting schedule?
So the big highlight is the, uh, budget and bond hearing on the tenth. Neither of you are allowed to get sick.
Any five o'clock's in this schedule?
There can be. There can be, yeah, not at this time.
I can do five if you want.
On the third?
Sure. You can remind me?
It's not often.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
On January third, they're gonna start at five.
You were talking about the budget and bond hearing, not the tip?
Nope, January third.
Okay, I got that.
They're gonna start at five.
Yeah.
That's it.
I'm not gonna put five, I'm gonna put early. Capitals. I'm even gonna put four forty-five. All right, budget and bond on the tenth, and will that be at Manaduck?
Nope, we do it upstairs.
Upstairs? Regular meeting, presidential primary.
Five also? Five thirty, okay.
What time do we have the hearings, or six?
Also, I have the calendar for the presidential primary on the twenty-third. Don't, you're not gonna be home for dinner.
Hope I'm home to go to sleep before I have to get up.
Get you caught.
Yeah.
So where would we find four people to help count the ratings?
So where would we find four people to help count the write-ins?
They mentioned they have a lot of free time, didn't they? And they like staying out late, I bet.
And there might be pizza.
There can be.
Might be fresh pizza coming in. We will need help.
Will you? We are.
We will need help.
When is that again?
January twenty-third.
January twenty-third?
It's Bruce Tatro's call, but we're going to implore him to have additional help because of all the write-ins.
Yeah. And you normally select what it does then?
No. No, we do participate, but this is, this is going to be an extraordinary number of write-ins.
Yep.
Or at least we anticipate. So, yeah, if you all want them, we'll give your names to Bruce.
My name's gone Bruce before, and you guys can call him, get us on. I would love to hear about it.
Right.
Excellent, thank you.
October expenditure and revenue report?
Say yes.
Yes, say yes.
What it is, is that we, we had to, there's always a certain number of write-ins that happen. Some are intentional, some are intentional to, for a purpose, a political purpose. But then there's others where they, they want to write in, Houston wrote in Jerry Bell or something like that. So there's always a certain number. But this year with the decision on the Democratic Party's part, there will be a substantial number of write-ins, we anticipate, for Joe Biden.
Because it's not on the actual ballot, but they're encouraging people to write it in.
So that means all those ballots get kicked out and have to be hand-counted. And that's what it would be. We would have an org, well, yeah, we always have an organized structure to it. Some people are tallying, some people are counting. We'll need it.
What's your preference on? Do you want it for the morning and night, or do you have work?
Just take it all day.
No showings that day?
No showings that day.
Sly, you're going to have to call in the backup operator.
Yeah. Here, October expenditure and revenue report?
Looks good.
Looks good. Getting down to nitty-gritty, what, seventy-seven percent buffer some?
Getting down there.
Consideration of sale of squad vehicle to Cheshire County.
So totally up to you, it's just something that, that came up as a possibility there and they needed a vehicle. We had one that we're getting rid of. If you want to just put it on municipal, like we normally would, and they're welcome to bid, that's fine too. Just would be a little more seamless and we'll be helping out, you know, one of our partners. But I'm sure, you know, maybe Troy or Fitzwilliam would also be interested because we're selling it direct to them. So either way, just.
How would you set the price?
They looked at Kelly Blue Book, I think it's worth more than that to them based on, because it's basically semi-outfitted and we took out a lot of the stuff.
Don't negotiate? Are you interested in the ambulance or the stair chair with a cop?
Two for one? It's a good question.
I think if you can come up with a number that you're comfortable with, I'd rather see us helping them because they're helping us. But if not, then municipal.
Okay, sounds good. Want to make that motion?
So moved.
I'll second that. The motion is to sell the surplus squad vehicle to Cheshire County, County of Cheshire.
On terms that are acceptable to the town administrator.
Sounds good. All in favor? Aye, the ayes over. Administrative update?
Nothing at this time.
Correspondence?
I think we should recognize that former select person Debbie Davis did submit correspondence with regard to a recommendation having to do with the decision we made with regard to not extending the contract for the fire chief. Take it on their license.
Sounds like volunteering to be on the screen with me.
Any non-public sessions?
Just one brief one for hiring, please.
Anything else? Have a good night.
You don't want to keep staying?
So Marcy, you've had five minutes to contemplate, or you and Jim?
If you could just find a deal with Shannon Moore, just send her a free description of what it entails or the hours or something without caution.
Putting on the grass and taking root.
It's the county that's going to pay me up.
Well, you may not have to count, because you're just doing the tally.
I could envision that probably all the ballots that have a name written in, you would just basically collate them, right? I mean, get them in its own stack and then somebody else would probably count them.
Oh, right.
We do that in Justiceville, we count everything by hand and it seems you're doing it with two people. Marcy, the two people do them at the same time so that you're always counting together to verify. So it's basically what you said, that it's done by two people at the same time.
Jill, you have like five ballots.
If there really is some more people, I'd have to be able to find a few others. Can't promise too much.
You're not going to help?
He's busy that night.
Yeah, sure, tie me up. I got to.
How am I going to? You as well, thank you.
Did he make, they got.
You too. Do you make that?
Somebody will let me remember.
B for hiring?
Second?
I'm Walker. Karyson's B.
Aye.